Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Whitehall City Council meeting, Tuesday, April 16th, 2024. If anyone would please rise from among the silence, all of the elected members. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Og, would you please call roll?
Smith.
Present.
Harcar.
Present.
Dixon.
Present.
Brown.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
Heck.
Present.
President Potter. Present. At this time, I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes of the April 9, 2024 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes, as well as the April 9, 2024 Agenda and Committee Meeting Minutes.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second. There's been a motion by Ms. Heck, second by Mr. Brown, to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. This evening, we have two special presentations, and the first one is recognizing that April is National Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Mallory Donaldson was supposed to be with us this evening, but she got called to another meeting, and so we've got some other people that would like to come present. So at this time, I'd ask you to please come forward and introduce yourself.
Good evening, good evening, members of the Center for Healthy Families, Black Girls and Young Women Collective. Here on behalf of the Center of Franklin County Children's Services, Malika and you provide three more programs. We are here today to invite everyone here to join us and recognize National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Before we launch, we would like to introduce ourselves. My name is Veronica Stewart, out of Reynoldsburg High School, around our level three.
My name is Brittany Go, and I'm a senior actuary at Columbus State Community College.
My name is Yoffion Webster, and I'm a junior at Columbus State Community College.
Celebrated across the country, National Child Abuse Prevention Month is an annual observance to raise awareness about the critical issue of child abuse and neglect in our community and beyond. Child abuse and neglect, also known as child mal treatment, are actions or failures to act by caregivers that cause harm or put children at risk. This can include physical, emotional, or sexual abuse, as well as neglect, and can occur in a child's home, school, or group day interaction. Did you know, last year Franklin County witnessed nearly 28,000 reports and calls to the child abuse hotline, with over half relating to physical child abuse. When it comes to the topic of child abuse and neglect, it's also important to note that Black girls and young women are disproportionately impacted, with many cases going unaddressed or overlooked. In 2021 alone, Franklin County Children's Services received reports of more than 7,200 incidents of abuse and/or neglect concerning Black girls, further highlighting the urgent need for targeted support and intervention to protect vulnerable children in our community. We believe all Central Ohio community members have an active role in ensuring children be positive, safe, and thriving, and if their families and caregivers have the information and support they need to create safe spaces for their children. So how can you and others in this room join us in this mission? As a proud demonstration of your commitment to this cause, the Center for Healthy Families on Saturday, April 6, created a pinwheel display at Columbus City Hall Law. The blue pinwheels boldly show our city's support of this important issue. The color blue, inspired by Michael, a three-year-old boy who tragically lost his life due to abuse, represents hope and reverence for all children affected by these issues. On Wednesday, April 10, we urged City Hall and other government buildings to illuminate the outward green light blue in support of National Child Abuse Prevention Month. The Franklin County Children's Services offices were illuminated on Sunday, April 7. On Wednesday, April 10, we encourage all council members, county commissioners, and city leaders, and everyone in our community to wear the color blue and post a selfie to social media, tag the Center for Healthy Families at Center for Healthy Families, and post using the hashtag #OhioWearsBlue2024. The Center for Healthy Families has also distributed National Child Abuse Prevention Month signage to various city and county departments. If you have received the signs, we ask that you proudly display this signage on the City Hall Law. Lastly, on Wednesday, April 10, Franklin County Children's Services held their annual Child Abuse Prevention breakfast, featuring healthcare expert and advocate Dr. Amy Harkin.
More than the color, this is a human issue that impacts innocent lives each day. This month is about intentional action and using our power, our forces, and our network to advocate for those who cannot advocate for themselves. Although this month is for that, I ask that you think about this every month, every day of the year. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to serving alongside you all as we work to raise awareness about this important issue. Thank you.
Ladies, thank you very much for coming out, and I truly appreciate your efforts and the presentation.
I'm sorry, what day is it that you're supposed to wear blue and have to have?
It was April 10th. It has a half hour ready. But you can do that any day.
It's wearing blue and tag the Center for Healthy Families at Center for Healthy Families, and the hashtag #OhioWearsBlue2024.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you very much for coming out this evening. Now, that brings us to our next special presentation. Mayor Mike Vivins, proclamation for National Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Thank you, ladies, from the Center. It was fantastic, and I have a proclamation from my office, whereas every child deserves to grow up in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment, free from abuse and neglect, and whereas child abuse and neglect are significant public health issues that affect children, families, and communities across the nation, including the city of Whitehall, and whereas National Child Abuse Prevention Month recognizes the importance of families, communities working together to prevent child abuse and neglect, prevention services and supports developed by this collaboration can help parents, other caregivers, and communities protect children and strengthen families, and whereas it is essential to raise awareness about the science of child abuse and neglect, and to encourage all residents to report suspected abuse or neglect to local authorities or child protective services, and whereas prevention efforts such as education, community involvement, and supportive services can help protect children and strengthen families, and whereas during the month of April, communities across the country come together to raise awareness about child abuse and neglect, and to promote the well-being of children and families, and I hope we get pinwheels that we could put out in front of City Hall. That's not in the resolution, I just added that. Now, therefore, I, Michael T. Vivins, Mayor of the city of Whitehall, can hereby proclaim April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in our city. I urge all residents to join in efforts to prevent child abuse and neglect, support families in crisis, and promote the safety and well-being of all children. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we will...
President Potter. Sure, this is me interrupting, and I may be out of line, so I apologize, but councilperson Elmore, and I thought it might be a good idea, before people leave, maybe, or maybe not, if they could take a photo with us?
Sure.
With maybe like the pinwheels and the sign or something like that?
Absolutely.
Cool.
You better go. Are they standing here?
They come up there.
Yeah, if you'll just come stand in front of us.
Mayor. Sure.
And then maybe customers, you kind of...
Ladies, yeah, be right in front. Shall we slide in?
Slide in, yes, please, everybody.
Yep. Yeah, we should be able to. Screw the wise. Good to see you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Great job.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Brown, Ms. Elmore, thank you for that suggestion. That was very good.
I was just gonna say, with the mayor, that was a good idea, getting everybody in there.
I will get that tonight.
Here's fun. So now, we will move on to our standing committee reports. Administration and Financial Management Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management met last week. Thank you for those, or person that covered for me. Minutes are on file. We will meet again next Tuesday at 6:30.
Okay. Thank you. Committee and elder advocacy Chairperson Harcar.
Yes, we also met last week. We have no pending legislation, and our minutes are on file, and we'll meet next week sometime after 6:30.
Very good. Committee Standards Enforcement Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Potter. Committee Standards Enforcement also met last week. We have several pieces of legislation on the agenda tonight to vote on, and as well several to amend to go to the Planning Commission. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week.
Very good. Economic Development Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. Economic Development met last week. Our minutes are on file. We have no drafts or pending legislation on tonight's agenda, and we will meet next week in these chambers after 6:30.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services Chairperson Brown.
Thank you, President Potter. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last week. We have our minutes on file, and there are no drafts or pending legislation this evening. We will meet sometime next week, Tuesday.
Very good. Public Safety Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week. We have no drafts or pending legislations tonight. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no legislation on the agenda tonight, and we will meet again this coming Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Officials Reports Mayor Vivins.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I want to thank City Council, as well as the city of Whitehall, for its grand attendance to the state of the city. It was just a fantastic event. It's in our rearview mirror. There is one individual that I would like to publicly apologize to that throughout all of the excitement, I did not acknowledge, but they actually got probably a lot more kudos and applause than I did from the state of the city, and that's Khalid from the Mad Greek on Broad Street that provided the food. And it was just fantastic, and I got so much, so many compliments about his cooking and about what was provided, and I am so sorry, Khalid, that I did not recognize you. It was in my notes to do so, but I failed, so please forgive me. As a result of the state of the city, I just want to report to members of council that, speaking with Assistant Fire Chief KJ Watts, the fire department was so inspired that they reached into the schools, and they are now creating a formal cadet program with the high school to bring in and to train young men or women that want to become firemen with the Whitehall Fire Department. I will say this publicly, anyone that's thinking about that, get your cardio in, because it is, it is not an easy task, but I believe that if they start young, and if they have the aspiration to do that, then I believe that they will be successful, and they'll add, they'll be fine additions to Station 150. And also in collaboration with that, they are intending on, as the kids start walking by, to go back to maybe over 20 years ago, when they would have a grill and food and invite kids into the fire department, just to develop the relationships, but they, Assistant Chief Watts said that they were so inspired by the state of the city that it sparked that, and that's what it's all about, is sparking that type of community inroads and community investment. So I'm really looking forward to what that, what will occur from that, and I'm just privileged and honored to be in a position to see it grow. So that's it from the, from the mayor.
Thank you, and you hit into something kind of interesting as far as the cadet program, which I think is fantastic. Whitehall had something like that. A past councilman, Reverend Terry Otis, was on that many, many years ago, and so that's wonderful, see if that gets revived and back. That'd be great for young people. Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney Dikka Nervous.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, last week, councilordnance in the city of Whitehall joined the litigation against the state of Ohio regarding the tobacco retail licenses. That's been filed, and I can let everybody know that in addition to Whitehall and Columbus, and Columbus is the one taking the lead for everybody, the other municipalities include Bexley, Cincinnati, Cleveland, Dublin, Gehanna, Grandview, Heath, Hilliard, Oxford, Reynoldsburg, Upper Arlington, and Worthington. And that is set, the law is set to take effect on April 23rd, I believe, is the date. Judge Saret is now overseeing the case and has scheduled a preliminary injunction hearing this Friday at 3:00 P.M. Having not been a part of a preliminary injunction to stop a state law from going into effect, I will be down at court Friday afternoon in, in, in person to, to be there and support the Columbus attorneys that are leading the charge on this for us. So that is all I have tonight.
And for that, thank you. City Auditor Quinzel is not with us this evening. Director Public Safety Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to echo the mayor's appreciation for everyone that came out and supported at the state of the city. Again, he, he said it may be a meth event, and it was far from. So if you weren't able to see it live, you can catch it on our YouTube channel. It is streamed there. I wanted to give an update. I know everyone that comes down Yearling Road has seen the bright pink building that we have going on. That is the PD expansion and renovation. That is not the color that it's going to be, so don't panic. That's just a vapor barrier. But we are on set to, on track to complete that project, the second week of September. So we are coming in quick, and then we'll have all new accommodations there. Also wanted to update everyone that our pre-construction meeting for the waterline repair replacement and street project is tomorrow, so that project will kick off in the next couple of weeks. Other than that, I'm just asking for favorable consideration on ordinance 031 and resolution 011. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Potter, if I may ask a question of Ms. Thomas?
Sure.
I suspect there will be some sort of a tour or some sort of a...
Grand reopening, if you will. Yes, yep. Correct, yep. We don't have anything set just yet, but once we get closer, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Director of Public Safety Greg is not with us this evening, nor is Treasurer Alexander. The following official reports have been filed in the council office since the last meeting. That would include the Otters Bank reports for March 2024, the Otter's Statement of Cash Position reports for March 2024, and the Otters Financial reports for March 2024. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have three items, first being the April 8, 2024 Board of Zoning and Appeal, Board of Zoning and Appeals Agenda, the March 11, 2024 Board of Zoning and Building Appeals Minutes, and finally, the March 18, 2024 Board of Zoning and Building Appeals Special Meeting Minutes. At this time, it brings us to our first poll public of the evening. I'll invite anybody to please come forward, and just ask you to state your name and sign in, and you'll have three minutes. Okay, we will have another one if you decide to change your mind. Ms. Og, would you please call roll as to whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any add-on legislation?
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I would like to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Smith, also second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
No.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 18, 2024 has been adopted. Ordinance 19, 2024 will be read by title only, but I will accept a motion to amend as notated in the legislation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, I'm probably gonna mess this up, but I'd like to introduce ordinance 19, 2024 and move to amend.
Well, we're just moving to amend, not introduce to this title only, but just move to amend.
Move to amend. Pardon me.
No worries.
Thank you for the correction. Second.
Thank you. So there's motion made by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Heck to amend ordinance 19, 2024 as written in the body of the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
The legislation has been amended, so I will now go to the title-only ordinance 19, 2024, being read by title only as amended on 4/16/2024, and has been referred to Planning Commission for the May 2, 2024 meeting with a public hearing on May 21, and it reads "Amending Section 1109.4 titled 'Community Gardens and Urban Agriculture of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and Declaring Emergency." That brings us to ordinance 2024, which is also being read by title only, but I will also accept a motion to amend as written in the body of the legislation.
Mr. President, I'd like to amend ordinance number 2024.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Morrison, to amend ordinance 2024 as notated in the legislation. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024 has been amended, and I will now read it by title only. Amending Chapter 1113, well, read it by title only as amended on 4/16/2024. Amending Chapter 1113 titled "Landscaping Code of the City of Whitehall, Codified Ordances by Implementing a Landscape Maintenance Requirement and Declaring Emergency." This has been referred to the Planning Commission for the May 2 meeting and the public hearing on May 21, 2024. Ordinance 22, 2024, I will also accept a motion to amend.
Mr. President, I would like to amend ordinance 22, 2024.
Thank you.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Dixon, to amend ordinance 22, 2024 as notated in the legislation. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 22, 2024 has been amended, and again, it's title only, and so ordinance 2022, 2024 as amended on 4/16/2024. Amending Chapter 1115 of the Outdoor Lighting Code of the City of Whitehall, Codified Ordesses and Declaring Emergency. This is also going to Planning Commission on May 2, with a public hearing on May 21, 2024. Finally, we have ordinance 23, 2024, which I'll also accept a motion to amend.
Mr. President, I'd like to amend ordinance, sorry, my computer is stuck, 23, 2024.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Dixon, to amend ordinance 23, 2024 as notated in the body of the legislation. Is there any discussion? Ms. Og, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
The motion has been amended, so I will now read ordinance 2023, 2024 as amended on 4/16/2024. Amending Chapter 1111 titled "Parking, Loading, and Drive-Thrus of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Whitehall and Declaring Emergency." This too is going to the Planning Commission, May 2 meeting with a public hearing on May 21st. That now brings us to our first reading.
Mr. President, sorry, if you don't mind, could we circle back to ordinance 2024? We began a discussion in the agenda meeting, and I was hoping, I conferred with Mr. Nick Ademus during the break between agenda and now. It would be amenable if we could discuss some of the changes now, so we don't put ourselves in a situation of needing a special meeting and kind of dragging this on if we do want to make changes for Planning Commission.
Okay, well, we discussed having our committee meetings, talking about then a special council meeting afterwards, but we could, so is that not?
Well, so in my conference with Mr. Dixon, we spoke about some of the comments he made, and it is my understanding that the city attorney is recommending, please correct me if I'm wrong, based on the language shared, that I shared with him that I received, that he would not recommend any changes at this time, so I don't see the point. I'd like to discuss it now instead of prolonging it if he doesn't see any changes necessary at this time.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I will let you lead that discussion.
So I shared with Mr. Nick Ademus, and I asked him if he wouldn't mind sharing some of the comments. He received some questions about removing specific language, some suggestions on how we could potentially amend it that he saw would be, isn't going to allow us the leeway we need or are cause for concern, and I asked him if he wouldn't mind sharing those comments with us tonight.
Absolutely. And they're, they're very, they're related, but because they were pointed out in the email I received, you know, one of them has to do with removing orderly from the definition of a neat and orderly manner. These are subjective words, but they are, they are common in this type of ordinance. One, one other municipality uses just the term "well-maintained." Another municipality used "maintained in a healthy, live state." So they're, they seem broad, but they have, there's a reason for that, and I'll get there in just a second. The other one had to do with the phrase around "sound and competent manner according to accepted good construction and planting procedures." I don't recall the exact word or partial of the phrase that was going to come out of that.
It was just "and competent."
"And competent." And that goes to, those words in the landscaping are very similar to what we already have codified in Ohio case law with regards to building constructions. To me, it's analogous to what we call a workman-like manner. And so when someone builds a home, when a contractor builds a home for anyone, they have a duty to build it in a workman-like manner. It has a definition in Ohio case law of the way work is customarily done by other contractors in your community. Now, if it doesn't sound like that's a pinpoint definition, it's because it's not, because it's community-based, there is a little bit of subjectivity to it, and it is evaluated on a case-by-case basis. So the, the language changes in here, to me, are fine, because we also have those checks and balances. A person gets a notice of violation if they have them. If they disagree with that, they have the right to appeal that notice of violation. Then if they don't do that, or they're not successful in that, they still have a cure period before they get their citation. They get a citation, they come to mayor's court. In mayor's court, they can, and while we'll be the first to tell you our code enforcement officer, if I disagree with them, I'll dismiss the case. If I agree that it's not a orderly landscaping, the person can have a trial before the magistrate hear. If they disagree with the magistrate's findings, or don't even want the magistrate to hear it, the case can go to Franklin County Municipal Court, the Environmental Division, and Judge Mingo can hear it down there. So these types of things, they're, they're a little, they're a little subjective on purpose because it's based on our community, and if we pigeonhole ourselves into "this is how it's defined," we end up with the problem we just passed earlier, this truck. The reason this was a problem and council had to fix this is, in our definition, if this truck in this picture for, for the other ordinance was parked on the sidewalk, we'd have a violation. If it was parked in the yard, we had a violation. But the definition in the code, so narrowly defined yard, is that it excluded the devil's strip once we put a curve on the road. So that's why we had to change that tonight, and that's the danger we run into if we start delineating specifics. So this...
Absolutely, um, and, and they're, they're very, they're related, but because they were pointed out in the email I received, um, you know, one of them has to do with removing orderly from the definition of a neat and orderly manner, um, these are subjective words, but they are, they are common in this type of, um, ordinance. One, one other municipality uses just the term well-maintained, another municipality used maintained in a healthy, live state, um, so there, they seem broad, but they have, there's a reason for that, and I'll get there in just a second. The other one had to do with the, the phrase around, um, sound and competent manner according to accepted good construction and planting procedures, I don't recall the exact word or partial of the phrase that was going to come out of that.
It was just incompetent.
Incompetent. And that goes to, those words in the landscaping are very similar to what we already have codified in Ohio case law with regards to building constructions, to me, it's analogous to what we call a workman-like manner, and so when someone builds a home, when a contractor builds a home for anyone, they have a duty to build it in a workman-like manner. It has a definition in Ohio case law of the way work is customarily done by other contractors in your community. Now, if it doesn't sound like that's a pinpoint definition, it's because it's not, because it's community-based, there is a little bit of subjectivity to it, and, and it is evaluated on a case-by-case basis. So, the, the language changes in here, um, to me are fine because we also have those checks and balances, a person gets a notice of violation if they have them, if they disagree with that, they have the right to appeal that notice of violation. Then if they don't do that, or they're not successful in that, they still have a cure period before they get their citation. They get a citation, they come to mayor's court, in mayor's court, they can, and Walt will be the first tell you our code enforcement officer, if I disagree with them, I'll dismiss the case. If I agree that it's not a orderly landscaping, the person can have a trial before the magistrate hear. If they disagree with the magistrate's findings, or don't even want the magistrate to hear it, the case can go to Franklin County Municipal Court, the Environmental Division, and Judge Mingo can hear it down there. So, these types of things, they're, they're a little, they're a little subjective on purpose because it's based on our community, and if we pigeonhole ourselves into this is how it's defined, we end up with the problem we just passed earlier, this truck. The reason this was a problem and council had to fix this is, in our definition, if this truck in this picture for, for the other ordinance was parked on the sidewalk, we'd have a violation, if it was parked in the yard, we had a violation, but the definition in the code, so narrowly defined yard, is that it excluded the devil's strip once we put a curb on the road, so that's why we had to change that tonight, and that's the danger we'd run into if we start delineating specifics. So, um, this language that's going back in, that's in the proposed ordinance is what used to be in the ordinance, in the zoning code, and to my knowledge, we haven't had many problems with it as long as I've been here, um, so we just want to put it back as it was to continue operating as code enforcement had. Again, the language, while it may seem a little subjective, it is commonplace in these types of codes throughout the area, um, so I don't, I'm not favorable to any changes that might narrow down or cause problems with our ability to use this in the future.
Mr. McAdemas, can I ask a question?
Uh huh.
So you mentioned like, um, construction and new builds and, and things like that, I think maybe part of the concern is that this is getting applied to just everyday people, right? Like I didn't build my home, and, but, um, so has there been issues with just residents and, like, I understand having it for construction, has there been issues with residents where this has been like used against them? I'm, I'm not sure why we're like making the changes myself, I mean, I mean, even healthy is objective, right? Like what I consider healthy and you do maybe, maybe different, so.
And, and it, we usually, we sometimes have these, and I don't have specific cases, but an example can be, let's take ivy on the side of a house. In a manicured yard with ivy growing up a trellis, it looks neat and orderly. That same ivy, that same species of ivy on the side of a house in a non-maintained yard with bushes growing wild, I'm going to use as part of my case to say this property needs to be better maintained because the ivy's just growing up the side of the house. Again, that's why you need to have that little bit of wiggle room because the context of it matters. We do have it occasionally, I don't see it a whole lot because we have, first off, they do a good job of staying on top of these, um, and, but when we see these, there's usually other problems as well, trash and rubbish, um, and that we focus on a little more, but it is a tool that we need to have for those, those yards that tend to get away sometimes.
And my follow-up with that would be to Mr. Dixon is, are there issues with this? I will state, I, I said last time, I live next to somebody who I did not want to live next to because of the way that they kept their yard, it was not anything that anybody would want to live next to. Neighbors behind us literally built a fence up because they couldn't use their backyard the way that it looked, so I guess, I, I don't understand why we're removing these words and how they've been negatively impacted the community.
Okay, well, one of the worst things in the world is government deciding artistic aesthetics, and this is exactly what we're talking about, uh, you know.
I assure you, my neighbor's yard was not artistic.
But what I'm talking about is, I'm not talking about the person who has trash built up in their backyard, we're not talking about that, as a matter of fact, I did not get rid of, of trash and debris, I did not get rid of that sentence. Uh, you know, giving this, uh, this photo to council of a truck parked up on a curb, I would like to see at least one, if not more, photos of cars that have been smashed into while parked on the street, because just last week, and I saw it in the, uh, the comments from the meeting, uh, there was a citizen who talked about her neighbor's car having been smashed sideways on the street by a drunk driver, so this is, this is again why I have claimed that people are parking up on the, uh, the, uh, the curb.
Them parking on the curb would have stopped that, and that's, that.
They are, they are trying, they are trying to eliminate it, yes.
So can I?
I'm not finished with my comments.
Oh, I thought you were done.
No, that's all right, um. Interpretation is my concern, government deciding aesthetics, artistic aesthetics, because landscaping is artistic, that is my interpretation of what I like in my yard, this section, that section, that is artistic, and I would say this, and I was discussing this with someone before the meeting, um, Jackson Pollock, very famous, very valuable artist at this point, it is a collection of, 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 of lines and paint all over the place, the, and when he first came out, people were looking at it and being like, what is this? This is crazy, this is not art, art is a mountainside with flowers and a pretty chalet, et cetera, this is not art, and so that was neither neat or orderly, but what it was, was beautiful. Jackson Pollock is an amazing artist, and I am afraid that having this kind of language in this, I, you know, I talked last week at length about the balance between, uh, a city trying to make sure that things are cleaned up and right, and the, uh, the citizens' right, uh, certainly under the constitution, to, to, to do with their private property, which they pay taxes on, with, with it as they wish, and this, the words that I ask to be struck from this are, have to do with, um, with interpretation of our community, you say our community, well, it's their property, it's not your property, it's theirs, our community is a larger thing, and all of these things have to do with, um, neat and orderly, you know, I can, I can plant azaleas next to pansies, and, and that's not neat, neat is saying it's all azaleas, and when you start doing this, it brings in, quite honestly, a tyranny, a tyranny of aesthetics which I find offensive as a citizen, and as a, an American, and as an artist, and that's why I, I, I put this forward, yes?
If I may?
Yes.
Um, in all of my years, I can honestly say I've never seen this cited because someone planted pansies next to azaleas, that's not what it is, um, it is, is neat and orderly, and it, I'm having a hard time thinking of a case where a person claimed that their disorderly and unkept yard is art, but to your Jackson Pollock example, if you don't like it, you don't look at it, it doesn't provide a home for pests and rodents and other insects that can attract in the area that thereby affect the neighbors. This is not geared at art, this is geared towards properties that need to be maintained.
Has this been used against somebody?
Do you have any examples?
For art? I mean, otherwise, I feel like, I, I, I think it's a big thing to say Walt's trying to be able to like enforce code in tyranny is a big jump, so I'm curious, has this been happening?
Yeah, do you, can you cite any cases?
Is Walt on a rampage to dictate the flower arrangements in people's yard? I really don't understand why we're doing this, I'm just going to be honest.
I, I explained it very thoroughly last week.
Has it been used against people, and is it, you're saying it's tyranny, so I'm just asking for examples?
One example, and it's a large one, and I will leave it at that. My fight, uh, about problems with code enforcement is, is a long time in the city, long before I was on council, there was a gentleman before I was on council, his name was Dave DeLuca.
May I ask when this was?
This was in two thousand, I don't know, ten, eleven.
Okay.
Mr. DeLuca was a Vietnam veteran, Mr. DeLuca was an artist, Mr. DeLuca oftentimes had peanut butter and crackers for dinner, and what I saw with code enforcement and the things that he put in his yard, yes, there were problems, but there was also things that didn't need to be, uh, bothered with, and yet they did. I, I, again, I'm not going to go into the whole thing, that was well documented at the time, and, and there are some people left here in government who remember that fight that I waged, but again, this is not about code enforcement's ability to, to get the trash, uh, the gentleman in the audience, uh, Mr. Robinson, uh, prepared something which, uh, which addressed my concerns and yet allowed council to do what they wanted. I object to suddenly being, uh, this change where we had agreed before, let's talk about it next week, then we can gather more, we can gather more evidence, more things to, uh, to show, to build the case, and Mr. Robinson's, uh, uh, ideas were, were very helpful in that, that would be nice to have with us today too, but we don't because we want to seemingly rush this through, and I don't agree with that.
If I'm not mistaken?
I would like, I would like the full time, yes, please.
This legislation is a few decades old, it's not being changed, it hasn't been, to my knowledge, an issue since I've been on city council with multiple complaints of abuse, I, I believe that, uh, the city has, in Walt Searle, one of the better code enforcement
This is not about.
No, I'm just saying, because he, he interprets what is here and has it backed up by the city attorney, to make, and he is very lenient, I've worked with him, oh, I know we have different opinions on this, and you have personal issues with it.
It's, it's not about.
But this legislation, to me, is sufficient and has been effective for years, and I have no problem with it.
One, one thing I'd like to say really quickly, um, I think with what I'm understanding and what I'm seeing, um, with your hesitation to push this through, or not push it through, but to amend it in the way that you're looking, it seems like you're looking to amend an entire section of this ordinance for one case that you're citing, there may be more that you know about, I don't know, but you're talking about one case.
Fifteen years ago.
Fifteen, fifteen years ago, as opposed to, I mean, that's the exception, not the rule.
It's not about the case.
Okay, I'm, I'm talking, but, and then outside of that, what I would like to say, I think it's important moving forward, whether it's with this argument or arguments moving forward, I think it is important, like you said, uh, you brought up the point of people being able to do with what they want with their property, I do think that's important, you're talking about private property, but I think there has to be consistency in which we make this argument moving forward, if we're talking about people being able to do with, with, with their property what they want in regards to art, or in a separate hypothetical situation, there may be a developer who has private property who wants to do with what they want that adheres to the zoning code, but in that situation is different, we don't want them to be able to do with what they want with their property, so, in any case, like I said, I think moving forward, I think this is an important point, and we have to choose to decide whether we want people to do with what they want with their property or not, what I'd like to say there.
Well, just because a piece of legislation has existed doesn't mean it was right in the first place, and now that we have this ripe opportunity to reexamine a piece of legislation, uh, that should be a good thing, if there are indeed changes that are seen that could be made, that's great, if there's none, great. I happen to see, uh, something that needs some changing, and it has to do with aesthetics, aesthetics, we're not talking about rats, we're not talking about trash and debris, we're talking about aesthetics, and so I, I really, I, I really want to, uh, to proceed with this next week as we had originally planned.
I do not. This legislation, as Larry spoke about, and at me being on council, council for seven years, there's, I have not seen any abuse of landscape, uh, to, to remove language from an ordinance that gives the code enforcement officer teeth to, to do what he needs to do in order to make our community better, for the health and safety of our community, and the welfare, and also people that live around, people who want to, to remove that language, it's a mess, it's disarray, tidiness, that would be all the, that would be all of the adjectives that would address the removal of language that needs to be here, and to this, to prolong this and discuss it when in fact there are, there are no documented cases to substantiate what you're saying, Counselor Dixon, so with that, I want to move forward with what this is now, I don't want to wait until next week.
A lot of what I've heard so far in this discussion is authoritarian in nature, nature, again, again, we have a United States Constitution that gives people liberty, I took an oath, I swore to uphold that Constitution, and we are not, I've said it before, I said it last week, I am an orderly person, that's how I take care of my life, my business, my own, my yard, my yard is orderly and, and, and manner, but that is not something, the aesthetics of which the government has a right to insist other free individuals in this country do, because that's what they want, I think it's, I think it's horrible, horrible.
And with that, I think we're kind of circling, and I think you're getting a general consensus of, of the feeling of council, um, and I, again, without anything specific to cite back on this, um, yes, you're right, you open it up, you take a look at it, but if there's nothing inherently wrong with it, then I think it's fine as, as stands, so.
There is something inherently wrong.
In your opinion, and, and.
It's really important, if you want us, if you, for me personally, if you want us to change this, I need the information.
I could provide that next week.
No. And the, but the example you gave was fifteen years ago.
This will have another committee meeting on it, um, you're free to do what you want, but I think at this point, we have kind of got circles on this, so.
Um, if I could just one last comment, um, I, it was not my intent to try to push this through, it's my intent to rectify my error and my delay to responding to these things, and Mr. McAdemas had his comments prepared, so that's why I wanted to introduce it, not necessarily, it was not my intent to rush it or put anyone on the spot, um, it's just the comments were ready, so I wanted to share those, um, and a question for you, Mr. Potter, um, yes, we do have committee, but at that point, we would need to, we wanted, if there was a need or a desire, if opinions were changed, to change something, we would have to call a special meeting, would have, which have to be done ahead of time, correct?
Correct. So it would have to be, if there was a consensus, we could have a, that fifth Tuesday, you could theoretically have a.
Can I just?
Well, we didn't, we'd have to, um, do it after, what, what'd you say?
Couldn't we have an after meeting?
After, after agenda or committee?
We would have to decide.
Yes, committee, sorry.
But, but yes, but the thing is, but if there's not going to be any movement on it.
Yeah, there's not.
So how do we find that consensus?
Well, I, I think the consensus is pretty well-known here, I think, I think it's ready to go for a vote.
I'm going to play it, sir.
I, I don't, I, I guess my question is, is do we, I don't want to get in trouble here, like, we can't like blatantly, do we like blatantly say, Mr. Morrison, I'm fine with the way it is, or how do you find that consensus?
This is open conversation, so Mr. Morrison said himself that he's fine with this, that's, we're not taking. Well, we're, we're not voting.
Right, right.
We're just having a conversation.
You can still have a special meeting.
Because this, this still would not be, um, in front of us, because it's still got those meetings that probably carry on to twenty first, and we would actually vote on this.
And then last thing, I did share Mr. Robinson's comments with Mr. McAdemas as well, um, I don't even specifically touch on those, um, but I, um, maybe if you want to take a quick minute to touch on where you saw some issues with those things, because I do want to make it clear that those were also shared, we're not just focusing on the comments made by Mr. Dixon.
Those were shared and, and were good, my, my issue with them became applicability and how it delineates out, and that's why I have used the picture from the other one, it gets a little too granular, and then when we have to start citing and we start getting all of the, the little bullet points, um, I, I just fell back to, you know, this is what we've operated with for years without a problem, um, we start introducing more granular elements to it, we start to create problems for ourselves.
Okay, thank you, everyone, I'm now going to move on to our legislation under first reading, ordinance twenty eight twenty twenty four, authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of seven thousand thirty-one dollars and fifty-six cents from unappropriate monies in the police department tax levy fund two eighty to the PD audits and fees expense account two eighty point zero 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 point fifty-nine thousand six hundred and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty eight twenty twenty four and move forward the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Thank you, there's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison to introduce ordinance twenty eight twenty twenty four and for suspensable rules, is there a discussion? This is odd, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move for adoption.
Second.
Motion for, to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? This is odd, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcourt.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty eight twenty twenty four has been adopted, ordinance twenty nine twenty twenty four, authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and forty-four cents from unappropriate monies in the Wim Penny Fund two seventy-nine to the tip fees expense account two seventy-nine point zero 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 point fifty-nine thousand six hundred and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty nine twenty twenty four and move forward. Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 29, 2024, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, to introduce ordinance 30, 2024, and for suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? I think I jumped ahead of myself, I'm sorry. I introduced ordinance 29, 2024, and move for the suspension of all rules, is there any discussion? Ms. Hogg, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Thank you. Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move for adoption, please.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? Ms. Hogg, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 30, 2024 has, I'm sorry, I'm hung up on 30. Ordinance 29, 2024 has been adopted. Now, the one I've apparently been wanting to get to all night. Ordinance 30, 2024, authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $4,999.75 from unappropriate monies in the General Fund, 101, the electric expense account, 101.950.59,000, and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 30, 2024, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, to introduce ordinance 30, 2024, and for suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Hogg, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Motion to for adoption by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? Ms. Hogg, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Ordinance 30, 2024 has been adopted. This brings us to ordinance 31, 2024, which we read by title only. It's been referred to the Planning Commission for the May 2nd, 2024 meeting, with a public hearing on May 21st, 2024. Making updates to Part 11, Planning and Zoning Code Title 1 through Title 15 of the Whitehall Codified Code to replace all instances of city administrator to Director of Public Services outlined in Exhibit A. We now come to Resolution 10, 2024, a resolution declaring April 14th through the 20th, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week and declaring emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to amend Resolution 10, 2024, and move for suspension of all rules.
Mr. Dixon?
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Dixon, to introduce Resolution 10, 2024, and for the suspension of all rules, is there any discussion? Ms. Hogg, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Dixon, to adopt, any discussion? Ms. Hogg, please call roll.
Smith.
Yes.
Harcar.
Yes.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Resolution 10, 2024 has been adopted. Our final piece of legislation this evening is going to be read by title only, and it's Resolution 11, 2024, a resolution authorizing the adoption of the official flag for the City of Whitehall and declaring an emergency. This now brings us to our second poll public, and again, I'd invite anybody to come forward, state your name, and sign our log. I've got three minutes.
Mr. Potter, could I ask a question quick, please? For the resolution on the flag, this might be a really dumb question, but is this the flag we're currently using?
It's the flag currently flying.
It's currently flying, and we have had it for?
A year.
Just over a year.
Just over a year.
Just over a year, okay.
And Ms. Thomas, if you would, if you could kind of give the background of why we need to have a resolution to begin with.
Sure. So to create an official city flag, it needs to go to the Secretary of State as well as the Department of Development. So legislation has to pass, and before that can pass, or before we can send it to those places, we do have to have legislation to make it official.
Thank you.
So this was just a housekeeping item, if you will, that was unintentionally overlooked.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
You're welcome.
Oh, committee day board.
Oh, you're looking at me? Okay. There's... Are we good on poll public this morning, sir?
Yes.
There is Rocket Building with the Chief on May 2nd from 6:00 to 8:00. It will be at the Whitehall Lions Day. It's for ages 5 to 15. It is $5 a person. There is a big summer kickoff on May 24th from Five Day at John Bishop Park. The first market on the Green will be June 11th. They are looking for vendors currently, and that starts at 4:00. There's also a Parks and Rec Commission meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM. The public is allowed to come and sit and listen, and it will be here.
Well, thank you. Anything else?
Oh, sorry, one more thing. There is high school testing going on right now, so you might see like kids have sacred starts, so you might see them walking later on the usual.
Appreciate that. Well, then come to poll council. Ms. Smith.
First, my favorite.
Yeah.
Thank you for those here in the audience tonight and those watching at home. Thank you to the Center for Healthy Families was here to present about national child abuse prevention and awareness. I thought it was awesome to see our young people come up and talk about that. I also immensely enjoyed the first hundred days, State of the City. You had a lot to say, and you said a lot of things that earlier residents may have seen, so. I really enjoyed that event. I'm excited to see the programs and events like the Fireman's Cadet Program that are going to continue to come out. It sounds like this is bringing back an old tradition. I think that's really cool, so.
That's terrific. Ms. Harcar.
Yes, thank you, President Potter. I would also like to thank the young people from the Center for Safety, Family, and Healing. That is really awesome. I think for them to get up here and stand up here was awesome. And our state representative happened to be here as well and was able to get a photo with them. And thank you for your proclamation, Mayor. And yeah, the 100-day event was not meh. I'm not sure why you would have thought that. I was really impressed with it. I loved the food as well. That was fantastic. I appreciated the diversity of the community that was there. I got to speak with members of the Ethiopian community and introduce them to some of the council members, and so I was just really grateful for that opportunity. So thank you for a nice event. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. I would like to thank all those watching from home, all those who came in here tonight. Thank you, I appreciate it. I'd like to thank the girls at the beginning for speaking on Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'd like to thank the mayor for his proclamation. I would like to say how terrific it is that this cadet program may indeed start, because that is a good thing for the community. Also, grilling outside and inviting kids to come up and that sort of one-on-one human interaction with the community, I think is great. That's what communities are a part of. I'm most displeased right now, as you can imagine, and the problem I have is, is that trying to do things rightfully for the community, first of all, my heart goes out to everyone in this community who has been sideswiped, wrecked into, had their mirror torn off by distracted reckless drivers. They are sick of it, and I am simply trying to help them on that issue itself. As far as the rest goes, I really don't know what to say right now. I mean, I could write some things down and present them as they are, but I'm very disappointed in this community, feeling that they have every right to insist that other people do as they want in terms of an aesthetic fashion. Very disappointed. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, President Potter. First, I'd like to just note that it's my understanding that we have finalized $47,000 to finish out a grant from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for park revitalization, and that's helping with the Rockwell District. And so I'm very excited to see that project continuing forward and, you know, what that will do for the community and involvement, so I'm very excited about that. I would also like to thank everyone here today, thank everyone for watching. I would like to thank the young ladies in the Center for Healthy Families for the presentation tonight. I think it's very powerful and an important cause that is made more aware of. And then lastly, I'd just like to congratulate the mayor and everyone else for a fantastic event. Thank you, guys, for all the work that you have done up until this point. The event was truly inspiring. I'm excited to see what the community and the rest of everyone else can do moving forward and what we can all accomplish together, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to our viewers and for those that came out and presented. I know it's been stated before about the recognition for the young people for the city of the Center for Healthy Families. But it's always good to see young people present. It gives them an opportunity to exercise their communication skills, and it helps them to stand up in front of, you know, who they, you know, us, council, and the like, and it's just good practice for them. So that is always good to see, to see that. Also recognizing Representative Humphrey for being here, and also the proclamation, April being recognized for the National Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. And that's a great feat as well. Also want to commend you, Mayor Vivins, for the first hundred days in the State of the City. I thought it was very thorough, well-developed, thought out, and a very visionary speech regarding what you've done, where we are, and what you hope to accomplish while you're here. And I'm looking forward, it's a call to action, and I believe that there have been already people answering that call, and I'm here to answer the call as well. So thank you for all the things and the points that you brought up. I made a lot of notes, and so I won't rehash your presentation, but it is something definitely to go back and look at. Lastly, I believe that as a community member and the community at large, we deserve to live in a growing, thriving, well-maintained, and healthy community. Also, a community that is safe. And so with that, we do need enforcement, we do need codes. It is a part of our responsibility as the elected leaders to make sure that our city runs decent and in order, and to remove those parameters from around that give us teeth to do and to keep and to maintain, and that effort, I believe we do a disservice to our city. And I believe that we all would not be elected leaders if we wanted to live in disarray. And so thank you for just viewing and for everybody that is also present in the council.
Thank you, Ms. Elmore. Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to thank those viewing, those in attendance, and the special presentations was very good. Mr. Mayor, I did not attend your 100th event, but my wife did, and she said it was very well done. And I want to look forward to seeing that on video so I can see what all went on, but she really knew it. Want to thank everybody for watching, and I'm done.
Thank you. Ms. Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody that is here and everybody that is watching from home. I enjoyed, like everybody else, the two special presentations tonight. I did want to touch on what Mr. Dixon said. I can't speak for other people here on council, though they would probably be in agreeance that, like myself, I do think and I do worry about the people that are parking on the streets. I don't think parking on the curb is the solution to fixing the speeding, the distracted drivers, the drunk drivers that are hitting cars. I look forward to working on the alliance that the mayor had brought up before with the police and other citizens and community members to work for a better solution to that safety problem, because I want to keep everybody safe in the community. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I too would like to thank the folks who came out for the Center for Healthy Families. To Ms. Elmore's point, I think it's really great when young people engage in the process. I know it can be a very nervous situation for young folks to come forward. Those young ladies, as have other people in the past, I think did a very admirable job. But clearly, their hearts in it, and I think that they're doing terrific work and hope they continue that. Mayor, I think your proclamation was very well spot on, and I appreciate you doing that. I too, as I shared with you, I was unfortunate I was in town last week for the State of the City,